And welcome, everyone. That's really loud. It's really loud. Welcome to the Select Board meeting in Bennington for Monday, October 25th. I am Jeanne Jenkins, Chair of this Board, and I would love for everyone to introduce themselves, starting with Bruce.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Bruce Lee Clark.
Hi, good evening, Sarah Perrin.
I'm Jim Carroll.
Hi, I'm Jean Conner.
Hi, Tom Haley.
Hello, Gary Corrigan here.
Lovely, thank you. And also with us tonight, we have Town Manager Stu Hurd, we have wonderful note taker Nancy Lively, and we have Cat TV in the form of Mike Cutler. So, thank you all for being here. And thank you all in the audience for wearing your masks and being socially distanced. So, first thing we need to do tonight is add an agenda item, which I would suggest we do as 8A, and that would be the approval of a municipal planning grant application for the Armory. And Dan Monks will lead us in that conversation. Do I have a motion to add that agenda item?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Is that you, Tom?
There were several others.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Abstentions, alright, great, alright, so that's added. So, let's start tonight with our birthday boy saying, leading us in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation, under one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim.
No, thank you.
And Jean, would you read our vision statement that guides our work?
Happy to. Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you very much. Alright, so, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Could I have a motion to accept it for the purposes of discussion?
I'll move that.
Thank you. Second?
Sure, sir.
Thank you, Jim. Wow, okay. Anyone want to discuss either the, we have minutes of October 11th and October 19th, and the warrants. Any comments on any of those?
I'll just be standing from the 9th.
Okay, so we can do those separately, thank you. On the minutes of October 11th and the warrants, that's, let's vote on that first. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? You, no, the 19th, okay. And then, for the minutes of October 19th, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Alright, so then, let's move directly into public comment. Let's see, on public comment, Linda Bermudez, you are up.
Hi, thank you very much for the time to come and tell you about a quickly put-together community event. Some members at the VFW Post were looking for something fun and local to do and beneficial to our downtown businesses. So, two of our members put together the idea of an adult scavenger hunt that will be taking place this Saturday, October 30th. You do not have to be a member of the Post to participate, it's open to the public. But, all the members, all the participants should be 21 and over. This is an adult scavenger hunt. It's a rain or shine event, but all the items on the worksheets will be in the downtown area, and so if weather allows, it's walkable. There will be a limit of 100 participants, and the hunts can be done either individually, or if you, like a group of you, can take a worksheet and everyone go in a different direction. It's $5 for the worksheet, and they can be picked up Saturday at the VFW, which is located at 137 North Street, between the hours of noon and 3:00. But, the worksheet should be returned by 4:00, so that you have time to calculate your points. But, you can take your time in downtown. The scores are calculated, for example, you may have to go to a local restaurant and get a to-go menu. But, if you, and that, you return that, you know, when you come back, and that's worth five points. But, if you can show a receipt where you had something to eat, or bought a gift card, then maybe you get 20 points. So, it's to encourage the downtown vibrancy. It's at your own pace, again, so you have several hours. They have also organized a potluck dinner. So, again, it's open to the public, a potluck dinner, you come in, after you return your sheet, you can have something to drink or something to eat. And, the winner with the most points will go home with the grand prize money. However, during that timeframe, they're also going to be doing a 50/50 raffle to raise money for children's Christmas organizations, to, you know, buy Christmas gifts for less fortunate. So, as the Christmas season fast approaches, it's a great way to remind us to shop local, support local, and still get out in our downtown and walk around and enjoy it.
So, what's the grand prize?
Well, I guess that depends on how many participants we get. So, as I said, this, you know, each sheet is $5, and we're limiting it to 100, so it could be $500.
Wow, that's a busy day.
That's a busy day.
Sounds fantastic.
Yeah, but it's fun, and weather still allows, and again, we're remembering, oh, I forgot, at that little shop I always wanted to go into, so when you're walking around getting your things, you can still browse in another store, or, so, so, that's it.
That's great, thank you. Any other, any questions for Linda? No? No, that, thank you so much.
Great idea.
We hope to see you on Saturday.
Yes, hope to see you Saturday.
Thank you. Wonderful. Alright, let's see, and next we have Daniel Stroll.
Good evening, thank you very much for having me. I'm Dan Stroll, I'm the Market Manager for the Bennington Farmers Market. Wanted to come up here tonight to tell everybody that we are transitioning to our winter Farmers Market next month. We'll be going to a bi-weekly schedule. We'll be going into the cafeteria of the former junior high school on Main Street. We worked with Chris Gilbert to be in there for part of last year, until we had to go online only. But, this year, we will have in-person markets at the cafeteria. We will also have our online ordering and curbside delivery. So, we're very much looking forward to being back in that space. Also, wanted to let the Select Board know that November 6th, our first indoor market will be Meteor Elected Representatives Day, so we're going to have some state representatives. I believe a couple of you here have already signed on to hang out, and kind of talk with the public, and answer their questions, and just kind of get your face out there. Because it is indoor, we will be masked, masks will be required, but we are, we're able to actually have indoor markets now, as opposed to much of last year.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Wonderful. Any questions for Dan? Yeah?
It's not a question, I just want to tell you, I so appreciate all the information that you put on Front Porch Forum.
Oh, great, thank you very much. Yeah, we've been trying to market a lot more this past year, especially with the two new location changes. The Deer Park, by the way, went wonderful this past summer, and we're definitely going to be back there this coming summer.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Alright, so, that's everyone we have signed up for public comment. Next, we are moving on to Declaration of Inclusion. And we have Beth Wallace and Mary Rogers here, from the Bennington Rotary Club, to talk with us about the Declaration of Inclusion, and also with a request for us to adopt the proclamation. So, this is exciting for us to consider. Please, please proceed.
Thank you, greetings. It's been so long since I've been at an in-person Select Board meeting, and not just tuning in from Facebook, so, thank you. Mary Rogers and I are here on behalf of Bennington Rotary Club. Bennington Rotary Club is proud to be comprised of area leaders, and include members from a variety of sectors, including small business, young professionals, real estate, education, and more. Bennington Rotary Club is part of the larger Rotary International, which defines six main areas of focus. Among those are peace, conflict resolution and prevention, and economic and community development. There are a few others, but those are the two we're focused on today. It's through the lens of these specific areas that the Bennington Rotary Club supports the adoption of a municipal Declaration of Inclusion. Around the state, municipalities have adopted such declarations because words matter. Because being welcoming is not only the Vermont way, but it's also integral to our town's economic development. By encouraging diversity and making it clear that Bennington believes in treating people fairly, that we recognize that everyone does not look or act alike, and that we value the contributions of a diverse workforce and neighborhood, we demonstrate that Bennington is a welcoming place to live and work. Recently, Bennington Rotary Club has hosted a series of speakers who are brand-new to Bennington, it's been so much fun. We've learned what brought these folks to our corner of the state, and what they do for work, and most importantly, we've asked what it would take to keep them here. The overwhelming theme among those answers has been community. New Vermonters, new Benningtonians, seek community. By adopting a Declaration of Inclusion, the town of Bennington shows a commitment to protecting and promoting strong community in which all can thrive, all will be treated fairly, and all will be treated with respect. We humbly request that the town of Bennington adopt the following declaration. The town of Bennington condemns racism and welcomes all persons, regardless of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, gender identity or expression, age or disability, and wants everyone to feel safe and welcome in our community. As a town, we formally condemn all discrimination in all of its forms, commit to fair and equal treatment of everyone in our community, and will strive to ensure all of our actions, policies, and operating procedures reflect this commitment. The town of Bennington has and will continue to be a place where individuals can live freely and express their opinions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So, I want to open this up, this seems completely consistent with our town vision. Open it up for any comments or questions from the Board? Anyone? Yeah, go ahead.
My question is really to all of us, and all of us here, and all listening, and that is, words do matter, as I would agree with Beth. But, I also think actions matter, and so, I'm wondering, how are we going to follow up on what are, I mean, I'm perfectly willing to adapt, but I'm also wanting us to do more than that. And so, if we can have a discussion about how, how that works, because the declaration in and of itself needs something more, it seems to me.
Yeah, I think we agree, and Tom and I have had several conversations relating to that, so, we do feel like that, as a Board, we would need, to make this come alive, we really do need to look at how we can make recommendations that will put this into action, because it does matter. I think this takes us a step further, we need to do something, something with it. But, let me see, are there other questions or comments from the Board? So, then I want to move to the public, see if anyone would like to comment.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Bennington Rotary, good to see you, in person.
Okay. Alright. Alright, so I want to ask, is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on the Declaration, or on the, the idea of adopting this proclamation? Yes, please.
I'm Linda Fulsham, I'm one of the owners of the Bennington Bookshop, and I came tonight because I just wanted to express support for this, I think it is really important, and part of a larger conversation and larger action that's happening, not only within Bennington, but across the state. Bruce, I agree that there needs to be some action behind any words that are put out there. I think one of the important things is, when you adopt something like this, you need to implement it. And you need to have ways to monitor it, and assess what's working, what's not working, and how as a community, we can come together and do better. I think this is really important. It's important as a statement of value, and our values, but I think it's also important as a community, and as people who live and work in town. And we need more people, we want to create a greater, more vibrant community. And the only way we're going to do that is to be welcoming, to understand that we're not all the same, and to embrace and celebrate that, rather than put up barriers. And so, I just really wholeheartedly support this, and hope that you'll consider it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Linda. Anyone else in the public that would like to comment? Well, I'm hoping that we will take this up, I think it's quite excellent, and I totally agree, Linda, that, the proof is in the pudding, and I think assessment is an important piece of what we should be thinking about, as well. How do we know how we're doing? Go ahead.
I just want to make one comment. This is one of the reasons why we decided to read the mission statement at every meeting, is to be constantly reminded of exactly what that means, and it is certainly very closely aligned with what this, with this, with what this declaration says. So, we will be reminded twice a month, that we need to do our, our part to make sure that we implement this declaration.
And I do know that for other towns that have adopted, have already adopted this declaration, that there has, there is some follow-up that's being done by the individuals who originated the declaration, to see if, if they can assist towns in making sure that, that we continue to move forward, and don't see this as a stopping point, but instead of a jumping-off point. So, I think all that's good. So, let's vote on the, on the Declaration first, and then move on to next steps after that, okay? Someone like to make a motion?
Done.
I would move that the Town, the Select Board adopt the Town of Bennington Declaration of Inclusion as read.
Excellent.
Second.
Okay, Bruce, second. Any more discussion? No? Then, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? Excellent. Alright, so, I think what I, what I would like to propose is that Tom and I sit down and make some initial, put together some initial recommendations on how to move forward with this, bring it back to the Board, for all of us to talk with the Board and the community about, and that will be short order, we'll do that, I'm thinking, that's no longer been two meetings from now, right? That's within the next month. And then, and I would love to make sure that, that Bennington Rotary gets a copy of his proclamation. I think, I really appreciate you bringing it forward, Linda, I really appreciate you supporting it. I think this is, this is why this is such an honor to be in this community. Yes?
And, at a minimum, while you and Tom are doing your work, we should put this up on the website, front and center.
Jonah's taking notes. Excellent, alright, well, thank you, thank you, thank you. Wonderful. Alright, so, let's move next to a continued discussion of the downtown funding structure. And so, I want to start by thanking Jonah Spivak, who is sitting in the front, for pointing out to us that we introduced this conversation and had the first discussion on what was, in fact, a holiday evening, and that not everybody in town watches Select Board meetings on holiday weekends. So, to that end, what we've decided is to continue that discussion this week, at this meeting, and then make a final decision at the next meeting. So, Gary, I know you're recusing yourself, as a Board Member, you also know that as your private citizen, I mean, so as a resident, you can certainly comment from the floor, so, okay? So, we have about 20 minutes to talk about this topic, and if we need longer, we can take it, as long as we are on topic. So, my job tonight is to make sure we stay on topic. So, the topic is how we finance downtown efforts, whether it's through a small number of commercial property owners that are paying a second tax, which at present is 20 cents on a dollar, of their, of the assessed value of their commercial property, or whether we spread the cost out to the general fund, which I think Stuart had calculated was less than a penny on the dollar.
That's correct. It's per 100, Jeanne.
Say, yes.
Per $100 of evaluation.
Yes, okay, per $100 evaluation, yes. So, we can't totally know how this is going to affect taxes, because we won't go into budget until January, but it is one of those things for us to be thinking about. So, what we do know is that moving this into the general fund would be similar, similar to what we do with both the Bennington Free Library and the McCullough Library. It's similar to the public schools in that we pay a separate tax, that everyone pays, not just people who have kids in the schools, BRC, Rescue Squad, so it's, it's, I think the conversation really is, is this, is supporting downtown activity something that we see as enriching the full community, whether we personally, you know, shop downtown or not. So, you know, this is an opportunity, and I think it's an opportune moment to look at this, because right now, we are seeing an incredible revitalization in our downtown, and it is a place where we're seeing increased housing opportunities, we're seeing increased dining and shopping opportunities, and certainly, as we know, whenever we stop tourists, they love our downtown, and see it as, you know, beautiful, wonderful place to be. So, with that, I think I'll open up questions. BBC members are here, and I think they're welcome, they're, you know, very much willing to answer any questions that we may have. Stuart is here, he also is a great resource on all this stuff. So, questions from the Board, and then I'll move to community questions. Yes?
Just an overall question that I should have asked at the last meeting, and I wonder if any, if Mike could sum it up simply, what's the benefit for the town?
And Mike McDonough?
Yeah.
So, you're asking?
Yeah.
Well, I would certainly offer the opportunity for any of our Board Members and other citizens that are here tonight to comment. What does this do for us? Well, there's the philosophical point, that as we talked two weeks ago, our downtown is of incredible significance to the entire community. Its vitality is the vitality of the community. And so, as I say philosophically, it makes sense that we should all be committed to the efforts of maintaining and supporting and advancing our downtown. Now, from the standpoint of the taxing component, not only does it tell the entire community that we are all behind the effort that is required, to see to it that our downtown sustains the vitality that Jeanne was just talking about, but also, it provides flexibility in terms of our ability as an organization, and I might add, as an organization that is deeply partnered with the town. We are the designated downtown organization under our state designation, as chosen by the town. We have a history of being that. But, it gives flexibility to you and us in determining what needs downtown has, what advancements we should make physically in the downtown, what advances we might want to make beyond that tight, controlled aspect of downtown, which is Putnam Square and Main North and South Streets. And, it gives us an opportunity to not, I would say, see needs but fall short of being able to meet them. It gives us the opportunity to consult and agree or disagree on those needs, and have the abilities to move beyond where we are. And I think that's, that's incredibly important. Jim, does that get to your point?
Yeah, but it leads me to another question, and that is, now every property owner would be paying this, what is it, eight bucks for every 100,000? Is that right?
Yeah.
But, it would, it will exclusively benefit the downtown. Well, almost exclusively, you're shaking your head, no, I'd explain it. But, how would the, the businesses on North Side Drive benefit from this?
Well, I can only speak on behalf of the Better Bennington Corporation and its mission. And, that mission is to see to it that big box, I kind of hate the term, because they're, most of us shop in the big boxes, but it gives us the opportunity to understand the significance of having a downtown core that is successful, and that is not sort of losing the battle, if you will, to corporate America, which provides us with goods that we all need, but also gives us an opportunity to say that our downtown rivals and survives. And, the personal comment, except for needed infrastructure improvements, which the town and the state have certainly made on North Side Drive, I don't think that, and history proves this, I don't think that North Side Drive needs the help, the assistance and the support that a downtown requires. And, and I, I think that's absolutely true.
Can I, I'll tell you why, I was shaking my head, no.
Good.
Okay? Because, because if people come to Bennington, because we have, we have a lovely downtown, we have a monument, you know, we have an old First Church, and we have those amenities, new museum, that people come to downtown for, it benefits North Side Drive, because they had, because if you look at where you stay, if you look at some of the places where you can eat, if you look at the other places you can shop, once you're in town, you explore the town. So, having something that brings people to the community is really important, and if it's something as special as our downtown, then we all do benefit. We also benefit in the downtown, as we've increased, I mean, we just increased the number of housing units by 36 downtown, and we've got more coming. of housing units by 36 downtown, and we've got more coming. So as those folks live in downtown, certainly, they're going to hang out in downtown part of the time, but they also are going to explore the entire town. They're going to shop at the grocery stores that are on North Side Drive. They're going, you know what I'm saying? So it is, there is a multiplier effect. It is not that what happens in the downtown stays in the downtown. What's good for downtown is good for all of Bennington in that expanded way. So I do think there is a, I think there is a unique relationship between the downtown and the larger community in that way. So, sorry for shaking my head, but that's what I was thinking.
But, you know, and I'll finish up here quickly. The past scheme or configuration has worked really well. I personally have not heard any complaints from commercial property owners about the average $400 fee, unless Gary would like to speak up. So, you know, why change it? I know you've discussed the benefit, overall benefit, and add more taxes to the bottom line for property tax owners.
I've lived in Bennington most of my life, and I have seen more excitement about the new vitality that is coming to Bennington downtown than I have seen at any other time in my life. And I think that that excitement, that vitality, is good for the entire town, and I think we see that. It's interesting to see the letters to the editor for and against the new football field and have those letters talk about the new vitality downtown and how wonderful that is. We need that momentum to continue. We certainly do not need a vote against the downtown. That would be catastrophic, I think. I spent a month working at a university in Tennessee. Great university, had 11,000 students. I would tell them, the town I live in, you have almost more students than we have people. Wonderful people there, great university, I really enjoyed my time there. About the third or fourth day we were there, we asked about downtown. Could we go down, we haven't seen downtown yet? Well, they said, there isn't any. And the life of that community, once you left the college campus, was almost nonexistent. Bennington was getting close to that. It's now coming back, it's downtown is coming back, there's an extraordinary momentum there. We've really got to keep that going. This is one way to keep that going. I am happy to have my taxes go up something like eight cents on $100 to have that money go toward an even better downtown.
Thank you.
Bruce, were you raising your hand or anything?
I have a question, but I'll.
Oh, oh, Mike, were you?
Hi.
Oh, go ahead.
Just give me a minute or two. I agree with, obviously, with my colleagues. We moved here in 2006, and it was clear that Bennington had been on the way downhill for a long time. Okay, some people say 40 years, some people say longer. Bennington is turning itself around, as my colleagues have mentioned, and as all of you see. The issue is, do you want that renaissance? Do you want that birth? Or do you just want it to sort of slip back into what it used to be? This is an opportunity for the Select Board and for people in this town to support its downtown in a very different way and alleviate some of the tax burden on business owners. We want more business owners, business developers, to come to town. One way to encourage that and to encourage new people coming in who want to live in and around downtown is to dispel this kind of thing. I personally find it a bit of an artifact, number one. Number two, I remember after, probably, we were here five or six years, I spoke with a couple of friends of mine who are developers in different parts of the country and who study economies, and we talked about this sort of taxing district downtown, and they said, you know, no, no, we don't often see that. So I would encourage you, members of the Select Board, to say, or to find out, what's best practice for communities around the country? Learn a little bit from that. I definitely agree with Eric. This is a great opportunity to keep building, to keep doing what people have been trying to do for the past seven or eight years here, and to continue it. I wouldn't let the opportunity go.
Bruce?
Thank you. I'm not going to argue the philosophical question because, as a philosophy major, I found it too difficult to figure out where I ended up at the end. So I'm going to ask what seems to me to be at least a bit of a concrete question, and I don't really know to whom to address it, but I'll, I went back to the town charter figuring there should be some questions, or at least some answers or options there. And I'm still trying to figure out what is, and this is why I had asked for the bylaws of BBC, because I was trying to figure out what's BBC's technical, legal relationship to the downtown improvement district, if that's the term that we're thinking about, and what's its relationship to those portions of our town charter, which talk about this may very well be antiquated notion, but if it's an antiquated notion that maybe, I don't know, this is my question, is, are we as free to just change it this way as we, as it seems to say? But I would love to see some legal opinion that says we can do that, you know?
Bruce, I'm going to start, I'm going to turn that to Stu, because actually Stuart does, I think Stuart does have.
That would be lovely.
Yeah, because Stuart did provide advice on this.
Yes, I did. I did not seek a legal opinion, because this is a funding decision. We're not, we're not asking the community to do away with the downtown improvement district. We're not asking the community to change its boundaries. We're simply determining how best to fund the activities of the contractor we use in the downtown. So the charter doesn't need to change. The charter can stay as it is, it's just the downtown improvement district tax will be zero. And we will move forward, working with, in this case, the BBC, who is our designee, to, on an annual basis, review their contract, review their work plan, as we do now, and determine whether or not it's worthy of being placed into the general fund at the level that the BBC is asking. That is a relatively straightforward question, and.
It just doesn't seem as relatively straightforward to me. And I'll admit, you know, I'm a relative newbie in this game, but it doesn't seem as relatively straightforward to me. I'm not saying that it kicks it off, and quite frankly, the other, I guess the other thing I would say is, I do not see a vote one way or another in this motion as a rejection of downtown. I think that would be a silly way of interpreting this. I would say, in either case, I am for funding the organization that we have contracted for to assist in the promotion of and the development of a vital downtown. Either case, there will be funding. The question is, who's paying for the funding? So the notion that this is about somehow a kick in the teeth for downtown, I think is a silly argument and one which I will not accept.
So Bruce, going back to the question, which is really the funding question.
Yep.
So if, it sounds like Stuart's answer is not sufficient for you. So what would you, what would be helpful in resolving this question? What should we, what should, what should be researched in the next two weeks and we can charge Stuart?
Sure. I mean, I guess, I thought I had seen, and I had received at one point in time, a copy of the bylaws from the Better Bennington Corporation. I'm assuming they're there, and I would like to see them. I, you know, I trust Stuart. I'm just saying, for my purposes, I like doing my own work. That's how I was taught by the judge I worked for. Do your own research.
All right. So the BBC bylaws, which were updated maybe two years ago, I'm thinking?
Would be very helpful for me to see.
It was fairly recent. So, okay, so those, why don't, Mike McDonough, is that possible, just to forward the copy of the bylaws to all of the Select Board?
Oh, it's certainly possible.
Okay.
Yes. If I might, and I forgot, and you're all forgetting, to introduce myself, Michael McDonough. I have been serving as the interim director of the Better Bennington Corporation. My interpretation of the charter, and I believe I'm accurate in this, is that the charter and this particular component of the charter is not an original element in the charter. It was added by amendment. It enables the Select Board to establish a district and impose a tax for the purpose of funding downtown. Thirty years ago, when that concept was developed, as Michael suggested in the negative, it was deemed an appropriate way in which to provide solid, established support for Bennington's downtown organization. And I think the argument that we may be making is that we've all outgrown that, either from the standpoint of dollars or from the standpoint of focus and responsibilities. So I don't think it's unreasonable to suggest that what was the way to go 30 years ago is necessarily the way to go today. And I, you know, we've, we've made the other sort of philosophical points that you referenced, but I think that from a practical standpoint, understanding that our downtown is more today than it ever has been, in terms of its content, in terms of the uses and services that are offered, and in terms of its footprint, that rather than simply expanding the idea of the taxing district, we expand the idea of townwide support and responsibility. So I'm not personally troubled by, you know, we're defying the charter. I think that we're just choosing, as Stuart said, not to use that authority which the charter grants.
Any other questions, Bruce?
No, not this time, anyway.
Okay. Sarah, do you have questions?
No, no. No, no questions. I think just a comment. I think, you know, I'm in favor of supporting BBC at however that comes up. I think just two different topics are how we fund the BBC and taxes. So when budget time comes, you know, if this passes, we could also still look at the budget and figure out how taxes are raised or if they're decreased. So I think those are two different topics for me. I'm looking at, looking at myself, I'm just kind of looking at those in two different ways, thinking about how I'm going to vote. So that's just my thought processes here.
Yeah, I appreciate Sarah bringing us back to, this is really about how we fund it, it's not what that amount is for any particular organization. What we're talking about is just a funding mechanism right now. Jim, questions?
Yeah, well, not really, well.
Oh, okay, I thought you.
Hang on, hang on.
Okay, it's coming.
Just a suggestion to Jonah to get this out in the public so that we can, you know, get some gauge of where people's sentiments lie on this. So.
Good. Thank you. Jeanie, any questions?
No, no. Philosophically, I believe in it. It makes perfect sense to me. I just don't feel like the burden of the funding should fall to the property owners. You know, we're talking about community, 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 and this is another way to be a community. We all benefit from a vibrant downtown, so we all should support it, whether we're property owners down there or not.
Tom?
I'm wondering if anyone could speak to how we ended up here in the first place, what the thinking was of the board when, 30 years ago, as to why they went this route as opposed to.
Stuart, you're on.
Am I the only one that was here?
I don't know, were you here?
Yes. The thinking at the time was that, and this is my recollection, so it may not be entirely shared with everybody that was alive and thinking at that time, is we needed, we needed to find a source of monies that could help us implement a number of very distinct programs in the downtown that really were downtown focused. And at the time, it was what became Bennington and Bloom, all of the furnishings in the downtown, the cast iron furnishings, the trash barrels, all of those things were thought to be something that would help improve the environment of the downtown. The thinking was at the time that we probably couldn't afford to put that burden on everybody, and so the downtown improvement district was created. There was also, at the time, a commission that oversaw the expenditures. Ultimately, the commission was allowed to disband, and you folks became the people who oversee the expenditures. Historically, Bennington and Bloom is no longer part of the downtown budget. It's fully funded by the town, with, I might say, a great deal of help from individuals who donate to keep it going. We also have expended, expanded Bennington and Bloom to North Side Drive. So there are monies being set aside to improve North Side Drive landscaping as the opportunities come about. We're not asking North Side Drive property owners to pay for that. That's the whole town and those who consider donating. All the furnishings are now purchased by the town. So this has evolved as the town, Grand List has grown, as the projects and the programs have grown, as our ability to support them beyond just a taxing entity, but through donations of people who really are committed to seeing the downtown improve, it's evolved. And so we're not where we were 30 years ago, and I think that's the key. Select Boards 30 years ago weren't having these kinds of conversations about what's important for our downtown. It just, the issue was being created by people within the downtown who were trying to convince the community to help them out, to do something different, and that's where it really came from, as I remember.
Great, that's very helpful. Tom, any other questions?
Yeah, okay, then. What I'm having trouble wrapping my. What I'm having trouble wrapping my, what I'm having trouble with is the timing. We're already asking, for good reason, folks to accept annual increases to their water bill because we need to build reserves. I was for that. We're coming, we're still in the midst of a national pandemic, and we're in a situation where our economy is literally adjusting before our eyes, and we're not sure where it's going to land yet. And I'm just wondering if this is the proper time to be messing with people's property That's what I'm struggling with right now. So yeah, so that's something I'm going to have to think of.
Well, I think that is, I think that's the question before us. That is the question before us. Yeah.
Yeah, I thought of a question, and I think you can answer it. So the structure now, the way it stands, does the BBC have more autonomy than they would if the funding structure changed? And if so, is it a big deal? Is it a complete non-issue? In other words, is there an upside for BBC to stay with the current funding structure? What's the upside downside, if there are any, for BBC?
I'm not, that, Jean, you've introduced a new thought to this discussion.
I'm sorry.
No, no.
Okay.
I mean, what's the point in having a discussion if you just focus narrowly on this and that? But you talked about the question of autonomy. I don't think the BBC has ever thought of it in terms of autonomy. We are, we are a creation of the community, and that creation was very much led by then Community Development Director Paul Boni. It was Paul's initiative that made Bennington think about its downtown. And there had been attempts for organizations to form and be that voice, advocate for downtown, but they tended to run out of gas. And if there's anything that I would say positive about the Better Bennington Corporation is that for thirty years, it has been able to sustain its role of advocacy, its role of thinking and devising ways in which downtown can advance. But there's no autonomy to that because we do it very much in partnership with the town. We have from the beginning, that's why I mentioned those roots with Paul Boni and the Community Development Office. And that sense of partnership was strengthened when the state established the Vermont Designated Downtown Program, which required, which offered benefits to communities if they met certain standards in terms of their downtowns. And this goes back to the question of, well, why is it all about downtown? Well, the state of Vermont certainly thought it was all about downtowns in establishing that program and creating a set of standards which are in statute that downtowns must, well, that communities must adhere to if they are to earn and maintain that designated status, which brings certain benefits to the properties within the downtown. And so that partnership, if you will, has always strengthened. I don't think the Better Bennington Corporation ever finds itself in a position that we can just go ahead and do something without the cooperation of the town administration, without the cooperation of many people in the community. We don't make those kinds of decisions in a closed room. They're always, you liaison on our board, we are in constant communication with the Community Development Office and with the town administration. So I think that there's a really strong bond in, so I don't see this balancing the ability to have more autonomy or less autonomy. I think it gives us all the opportunity to just keep moving forward. And I do want to mention that, yes, the BBC supports this change, but it is not to fund the BBC. It's to fund our downtown, and we see ourselves as a tool in that process. So I hope that that...
I thought that's what you were going to say. That's, I really, yeah, I really did. I just wanted to ask the question to hear your answer, really.
Yeah, yeah. No, that's all part of the...
So nothing's going to change for you as an organization, really? It's just where the funding comes from?
Well, the change would be in concert with the town to determine what more can we do, what more should we do.
Jeanie, if I could.
Yeah, yes.
Just a second, what Mike is saying. If you were looking at the process, the process of funding the BBC under the current downtown designation means they come to us in April or May of the given year, they review their year in the past, they lay out their work plan for the future, and they show us what portion of their budget they would like us to fund. That is not going to change.
Right.
It's just they're going to do it in January instead of April and May.
Right.
If there are no other board questions, I'll move to the community. But go ahead, Sarah.
A quick comment. I can, I see what town Tom's coming from, and that's where I was coming from probably when we first kind of were going over this. And then I, kind of to separate from what I was saying, I thought, you know, we can talk about the percentage and the increase or decrease at budget time. Now, this is something, this is a vote right now. We can talk about tax increases during budget. Don't have to really worry about that now. For me, this is more of, as a business person, we're supporting everybody supporting downtown. So not, I'll stop now, but that's where I was thinking from.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah. Thank you. Anyone in the audience who has a question or a comment about this? Yes, please. And please introduce yourself. I was really bad letting all those people stand up and not introduce themselves.
Edie Siewitzki. I live in North Bennington. One of the things that I think is really important about the entire town embracing the tax, if you will, is that we all benefit when a downtown is vibrant. People want to come here to visit. People want to come here to live. It raises the property values, and it benefits all of us that way as well, and it will relieve the business owners of an somewhat, for some particularly starting up businesses, an onerous tax that they have to pay because they happen to want to be downtown as opposed to Northside or someplace else. So I think it's a win-win for the community and for the business downtown.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment? Yes, Jonah.
Hi, I'm Jonah Spivak. I'm the new Communication Coordinator for the Town of Bennington. But up until a month ago, I was a local business owner. So I'm sort of in an unusual position in regards to this issue. Like Stu, I was around thirty years ago when this was initially being discussed, and I think he did a very good job of sort of explaining where, or how, or why we got to this point. I would also just like to add to this conversation that having a downtown organization does have real benefits. It's allowed us to leverage hundreds of thousands of dollars of infrastructure improvements through grants. It is a checkbox that often appears as we're trying to go after these state and federal monies coming back to us by saying we have a downtown organization that works in our favor. As a business that was traditionally outside of that district, and I mean literally just outside that Downtown Improvement District, it was often a source of frustration for my wife and I, who saw the benefits of being part of what was going on with BBC's marketing efforts and their streetscape improvements. We supported the BBC through a membership throughout the entirety of its existence and continue to do so today. And asking the community, and this is the important thing, and Jim, this is why I did request a two-week pause to give the community plenty of time to think about this issue, because really, we're not talking about any substantial change to the BBC. What we are simply talking about is how that tax is raised versus on a very small few in a very constrained district, which also limits what the BBC can do and who, what businesses they can help, to giving it the opportunity to expand the scope of their work by expanding that taxing district. And just, I think, a correction, it's not eight cents, but it's a fraction of one cent, what that current tax would be if it spread across the entire town versus the twenty cent tax per hundred as it currently is on downtown businesses in that core district. And I would just like to echo what many people have said here tonight, that is, the whole community benefits from having a vital downtown. We've heard that over and over. And I think one thing that's different now than thirty years ago is that that has become clear to us as we've seen the positive results of these efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonah. Anyone else like to comment? All right. I think this has been fruitful, has given us more to think about, and we will take this up to make a decision at the next meeting. Okay? All right. So with that, we will move on. And next up, we have Police Procedures Update, which is going to be Bruce.
Thank you. Here's my list. There we go. So, procedures, as opposed to policies, but in addition to policies, sort of added to policies. Procedures, the first set of procedures to the first set of policies are now posted on the Bennington Police Department website. That's benningtonpolice.com. Bennington Police is all one word. All you have to do is click on the About tab, and you will see those procedures there. You will also notice, if you click on that About tab, that you will see a new item, which is their table of organization with the officers' names and positions. And I think that's a real plus addition. Would even love it to be more prominent, but I'll go with having it up there under the About tab. The second set of procedures, that is for the second half of the ones that we've put together, for the policies we've put together, will be available for comment now on the Town of Bennington's website, under Community Resources, and then Sub-Unit Community Policing. That comment period begins this coming Wednesday, October 27th, and will continue through 5:00 PM on Wednesday, November 17th, giving everybody three weeks to read through those and make comment as they will. And I hope that you will, as a community, get out there, take a look at those, make comments, make suggestions, ask questions. And just finally, and I know probably somebody else is going to talk about this, but if you're on the town's website, you can go to Boards and Commissions on the top bar, and you can find the Safety and Equity Task Force there. And with regard to police work, if you're interested, the current internal investigation process is now found there under Additional Resources. So lots to explore. I think it's easier to find right now, and that's good, and I thank those who worked on that.
Thank you, Bruce.
I think that's everything.
Yes, and thank you, Jonah.
Thank you, Jonah, yes.
All right, all right. So excellent. All right, so next up, we are going to talk about the AT&amp;T Pole Lease. Dan is joining us for this.
Thank you, everybody. This has been, I think, over a couple of years, more than a couple of years in the making. Some of you folks may recall when it was initially brought up as a possibility several years ago. So just a quick summary of the proposed lease. It is for a cellular antenna on a pole, essentially a utility pole type structure, in the Pleasant Street area, right off of Pleasant Street behind the Madison Brewing Company, that public parking lot. So that is the location. It is town-owned land, which is why there's a lease for you folks to review. The term is for ten years, and the rent is $300 per month with a 2% escalator each year. This lease has been reviewed by Town Council and deemed appropriate, you know, obviously subject to your approval with regard to the terms, but with regard to the protection from liability and all the appropriate protections for the town, our Town Council has signed off on it. The Planning Commission has reviewed the proposal. It's quite a while now, I don't know if you even remember, Michael, but we reviewed the proposal, the Planning Commission reviewed the proposal, we made some comments to the applicant, and they made those changes. So the Planning Commission is comfortable with the proposal, the aesthetics of the proposal. Obviously, that's not their purview to determine whether the terms are acceptable or not, that's the select board's purview. I will also mention that there are several of these facilities going up around town on existing utility poles that are owned by utility companies. Those have been approved, previously approved by the Public Utilities Commission. The town doesn't have any authority to review those, but since this one will be occurring on town property, not on a town right of way that is occupied by a utility pole, the town does have the authority to review this. I'm not an expert on this stuff, but I believe David Ford, David, I've never seen David in person, so I was hoping that was David, because he got here after the meeting started, and I didn't have a chance. But David represents the folks who are working to install this facility, and so he will probably be able to answer more intelligently any questions you might have. But with that, David, do you want to come up?
Sure.
We can both be available up here to answer any questions you folks might have. I know that there are some questions about other locations and the need for a facility here, so I'll let you guys ask David.
Yes, so welcome, David.
Yeah, so David Ford with Centerline Communications. We are AT&amp;T's vendor for New England. We basically do all turnkey solutions. We build their networks, design their networks. And as Dan said, I've been working with him for going on a few years now to get this facility hopefully eventually constructed. So like Dan mentioned, we do have, planning review is complete. We did go to the State of Vermont Public Utility Commission for a certificate of public good. So that's all set or approved through the state, and now this is kind of the last step to make sure the town is comfortable with the lease as well as the location, and then hopefully we ultimately build this.
All right. So, and so you are coming to us because you were, we, this is municipally owned?
Yeah, I can kind of explain the difference.
Yep.
So, three examples, I'll just shoot them out there. 406 South Street, we have one location there. We have another one at 625 Main Street, another one at 217 North Street. And those three are considered utility sites. So AT&amp;T, we have a master lease with the utility company. They allow us to mount our equipment on their existing utility poles. And this would be considered a private location. We weren't able to find a utility pole in this general vicinity to cover the coverage maps and the objective that we want. It's coverage and capacity. So yeah, that's why we're coming to you for the private location. We consider it a private location even though it's on town property.
And if you, and the reason for this pole is so that you can provide coverage for...
It's more capacity and offloading. Yeah, so you have all the major tower sites. We call those the macro sites, what you see along the side of the highway. So those are surrounding town, and it's the small finite pockets around town, especially in the center, that are having a hard time keeping up. So these will kind of offload the tower sites, help with coverage and capacity as far as download speeds, all that kind of stuff.
Great, okay. So questions from the board? Any questions?
I do.
Yes, please.
This is in a parking area, and who is responsible if someone drives their car? This is in a parking area and who is responsible if someone drives their car and knocks this pole over?
So in the lease, there's a maintenance clause, so if in the event it was knocked down, AT&amp;T is the pole owner, so we would go ahead and replace the pole. Just like a wooden utility pole, a car knocks into it, the utility company would replace that. But because we're the pole owner in this case, AT&amp;T is responsible.
So if there are no more questions from the board, any questions from the audience? No? All right, and so what you need from us is?
Just the motion to authorize the town manager to sign the lease that you reviewed and we can proceed.
Okay, do you have someone that would make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
All right.
I would move to authorize the town manager to sign the proposed lease.
Great, do you have a second? Thanks, Gary. He raised his hand. All right, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, and then, oh dear, what's up next? Oh, and Dan is still up here to talk about the Armory, the approval of a municipal planning grant application to look at reuse of the Armory.
Yes. Jeanie, before we talk about this, Centerline has done work for the Armory. For the National Guard. So, I mean, I don't think it affects this at all, but.
Yeah, I didn't see your name on anything.
Just in case people don't have the scope in front of them, you can just pass it down here.
So, I mean, you would only need to recuse yourself if your company is actively involved in this reuse.
So just a little background, you folks all know that in exchange for some land off of Bowen Road, the federal government has. I said the federal or the state government, Stuart?
It's actually the National Guard.
It's actually the National Guard. So the National Guard has agreed to transfer to the town, the historic Armory building. The National Guard intends to build a readiness center on the property that we own and they'll soon own in exchange for this property off of Bowen Road. They expect that that may take two to four years, Stuart, is that a fair statement? So although we won't be obtaining this property tomorrow, we want to be ready when we do obtain it, when we do take title to it. And one of the things that I've discussed with our buildings and grounds folks, our facilities director, as well as with Stuart and other staff members is. Want to make sure that we have a good understanding of the building and what would be the best, highest and best use for it from the community standpoint, from the Select Board standpoint. And in order to help us make those decisions. I've long hoped that we could do a reuse plan. And so that is what's proposed before you, is that we actually fund the development of a reuse plan. It'd be similar to what was done for, what was called the Downtown Area Wide Plan, which really focused on the Putnam area, which is now the Putnam Project. There was also, Gary knows as well, we just finished up an Energizer reuse plan. And the hospital did one for Everett Estate, which we have not seen yet, it is their property, but eventually I'm sure we'll see a portion to that. So it's really a way to take a look at a property. Understand what's there. Look at, you know, take stakeholder input, review existing documentation. And then develop a reuse plan for the town. So what I'm requesting this evening, I have identified a funding source for that, it's the Municipal Planning Grant Program. And what I'm asking for this evening is that the Select Board authorize the staff to apply for a municipal planning grant to fund the reuse plan for the Armory. There is a 10% match, however, that match will be covered by expenses that we already intend or we already will have to incur to do environmental due diligence on the property. We fully expect that that property will be cleaner than almost any other property. If you've noticed recently, the National Guard has spent about three years remediating that property. And we expect that that will be a completely clean site, and obviously won't take title unless it is. But we will be retaining experts to, an expert environmental consultant to make sure that that property is clean and that it's appropriate for us to take it over without risk. So that portion can go towards our match, we will be spending that anyways. So there should be no additional appropriation of funds to perform this project. So given the fact that it has no economic impact or no impact to the taxpayer. I think this would be an appropriate way to fund this project, an easy way to fund this project. And I would ask that you folks authorize the staff to proceed. And I do have a resolution that I'll pass along, that I'd ask you to sign if you do agree that the staff should proceed. We need that resolution to send to the state for their funding decisions. Any questions? I did send along a scope of work, which was much more detailed than my quick review of what a reuse plan is. But if you have any specific questions regarding that proposal, I'm happy to answer those. And we will likely be working with BRCRC, but it is going to be, the project does, we do need to seek requests for proposals, BRCRC may bid on it. But we may be working with another entity, even though they've done several in the past and have expertise. Most likely what will happen is they'll partner with somebody else and they'll submit a proposal. If they are, if they're chosen, then we will proceed with that. But it could be any planning consultant.
Great, questions from the board? Go ahead, Sarah.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to acquiring, hopefully acquiring something. Just reiterating pretty much what you've said, no cost to taxpayer, you're just applying for this, correct?
That's correct. Now, I do want to be clear that we are going to have to expend some money and so that's going to be already, regardless of whether we do this grant, to ensure that the property is clean and those sorts of things. But that's going to count towards a match. So although there is a 10% match, those funds are funds that we are already going to have to spend. So should be no additional impact to the taxpayer, that's correct.
Great, Bruce?
Hi, Dan. This, I mean, we obviously have had just a short amount of time. It's just a technical question, or it's a question about how much of the two and a half pages? I mean, are we, do you have to put into the application for the grant? And is it at all flexible if we all of a sudden see something that we would like to add or?
Oh, it's absolutely flexible till about Thursday afternoon when I have to press send.
And, right.
But up until that point, and even after that, we can make amendments, this is really just meant to be a general scope.
Right, this is enabling. That's what I wanted to say.
But if there was some major missing component?
No, I don't see one, but I'm just, you know, since I just saw it this afternoon, it would be, I'd like a chance to see it again tomorrow morning.
Sure, and feel free to send me any comments. One of the things that, you know, you may not have seen and hear is that, you know, the first thing that we do plan to do, and we've done this with all the other reuse plans. Is to put together a broad coalition of stakeholders to form a steering committee. And they'll review the request for proposals, they'll review the proposals, they'll make the selection of the consultants. So, you know, we will have a chance to tweak that proposal, it doesn't have to be word for word this scope here.
No, that's helpful, thank you.
Great, Jim, any questions? Jean?
No, I don't have any questions, but this building is so strategically placed, right behind Putnam. I think it's just such a good use of the 10% match, whatever it happens to be, we got to get this right. So I love being able to hire consultants to really analyze and help us make the best decision we can make with what to do with it.
And we're not right up against the gun on this one, we have some time so we can make thoughtful, careful decisions regarding the use of that property, so.
Tom, any questions? Gary?
No questions, it seems like.
We just changed locations. So, yeah, I did have a chance to read it this afternoon and I'm really happy there'll be a steering committee. I was really, just the short list of documents that will help the consultant look at what we already know is great. And I'm hoping that for the public, maybe these can be placed under documents on the town website as well.
Many of those are already, but certainly, there may be a couple that are not, yes.
Yeah, that would be really nice, because I think it is a great, it is a great list. And, yeah, I mean, it does feel to me like the scope of work is really broad and it asks a lot of questions, it talks to a lot of people. And then it brings it back to the community in a public meeting for us all to sort of chew on what has been learned and where we might go next. So that's excellent. So do we, anyone in the audience have questions? Comments? All right, so then what you're looking for from us is a motion to authorize staff to put in a municipal planning grant?
For the Armory reuse plan.
For the Armory reuse plan, okay. Anyone want to make that motion? Who is that? Tom? Okay. Bruce is seconding it, great. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? All right, very good.
Thank you.
All right, so let's see, so next up is Stuart Hurd for the Manager's Report.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick agreements, they're not really action items. But I provided you with a budget schedule for the upcoming year, FY '23. And the only reason I'm really presenting it to you tonight is there is a change. Because the first Saturday, which would normally be, the first Saturday in January, that is, which would normally be our first work session, turns out to be New Year's Day. And so I am proposing that this schedule change slightly so that we meet on the evening of January 3rd as the first budget review session for the board. The rest of the dates are really set partially by statute and partially by the timing I need to review my department level work and get it on to you. So if you all agree to this schedule, you don't have to take a vote, we will move forward. I can tell you the work has already begun in most of my departments to develop budgets, so we're off and running. I do caution you to be concerned about the cost of living at the present time, it is running much higher than we would normally see. And unfortunately, it looks like it's going to be that high, 4% to 4.5%, possibly 5% over the next several months. The Fed seems to think it will die back to around 2%. But we don't have any, right now, our prices on some of our materials are really going through the roof. 15% to 20% increases in some of our materials, so it's going to have an impact on our budgets. And, but we'll deal with that when the time comes. The second item, I need to know whether or not we can get a quorum for a meeting, a special meeting on November 1st, which is next Monday. To hear a formal vicious dog complaint. It'll be the first under our newly adopted ordinance. This is a complaint that I have provided you all with the information already. I had hoped to work out a solution. Unfortunately, the complainant would like to go forward. So I'm asking if we would set a date to meet November 1st at 5:00 PM here at the fire facility for a hearing on a vicious dog complaint.
Yes, Jean?
I'm going to be out of town that day, probably not back by 5:00, could we move it to 6:00?
Whatever you wish, but that's the board's decision.
Okay, so let's see, so November 1st at 6:00, would that work for everyone?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, is this true for everybody? Okay, great.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a few updated items. The Economic Development Strategy Report, which is being prepared by White and Burke, is currently underway. They're looking at a variety of issues involving economic development within the community. And funding sources range from some of the ARPA funds to the TIF, to other grants that might work. We're not entirely certain when the report will be finished, but we hope within the next couple of weeks. And so it'll also be coming to you and then ultimately, public input will be sought, but that is underway. The next is somewhat complicated. The state of Vermont, by rule, altered the regulations involving stormwater permits. Municipalities, when we take over a roadway or a public parking lot. We are required to manage the stormwater that flows from those paved or impervious surfaces and deal with it appropriately. In the past, it was just, all our focus was, was the highway, or in the case of the parking lot here, it was the parking lot we had to worry about. The rule changed and we now have three stormwater permits that are up for renewal. That require one of two things. That we either agree to manage the stormwater that may develop on private properties within the subdivisions that these roads exist. Or, working with the state, we agree to work with the homeowners to form their own homeowners association. And that the homeowners association would then manage the stormwater developed within the private properties. In most new developments now, where there is private property, homeowners associations are created and maintained. And they take that responsibility as part of the state stormwater permit approval process. So I'm not asking for a decision tonight, this is something I just wanted to bring to your attention. I wouldn't say we're under the gun, the state has been very understanding, because we have three subdivisions. One of them probably now more than 30 years old, where a homeowners association did not exist. And now the state is saying, well, it either must exist to maintain and manage their stormwater, or the town must take it over. Which would then give us, in some fashion, authority over what kind of impervious materials they can place in their yards. So if somebody wanted to pave their driveway, they would have to get a permit from the town in order to do that. Because that would have to be calculated into the permit.
So Stuart, in saying that this needs to be on a future agenda. Do you, does the town need to have conversations with these communities, these neighborhoods, prior to bringing it to the board? Or is the board in some way saying you need to create a homeowners association or, what is the process?
My goal would be to take the approach that we notify the homes within these developments to let them know that there are two options available to them. I think if I was a homeowner and a homeowners association, I would want some control over what I'm able to do. And that would be actually the best for the town. But if the subdivisions, if they believe that, hey, we don't care, you take it over and you manage it, that could be also an option. We would have to come to an agreement with those property owners as to how we're to proceed. But I wanted to bring it to your attention and to the public's attention, because we've been working on this with the state of Vermont. We were hoping to find a way to waive it and not have to deal with it, but unfortunately, we're not going to be able to do that.
So do you see this as something that needs to come before the board in a month or two months?
No, I think you're probably sometime in the spring.
In the spring, okay.
I think it's going to take us some time to get the message out to everybody, to get some input from the various property owners themselves. You know, one of these developments is 108 units. That's a lot of people to contact, a lot of people to get on board. The two other developments are similar. The two other developments are somewhat smaller, but still fairly, fairly large housing developments that we need to deal with.
Okay, so this really is more FYI for us?
Yes, it is.
And you guys are working on it.
Yes, it is.
Okay, can I just ask a quick question? So, I'm assuming you know that there are no existing homeowner associations that, in those neighborhoods now?
Yes, we know that.
Okay.
That would have been the first question.
Yeah, I assumed it was your first question, too, because we do think alike.
Yes, thank you. And the last thing, I think, is that there are still some lead line removal projects ongoing, and probably will continue up until the snow flies, but if you've been around town, you'll see that most of our paving is completed, most of our sidewalk work is completed, we're doing some finish work and some finishing up. Some roads we may, if we can find, paint, do some additional striping, but road paint is one of those things that is not readily available, thanks, in fact, to the pandemic.
It's on a ship.
It's somewhere, yeah. So, there you have it. Obviously, you also have the police department report and the communications coordinators report are now attached, as is the bike pad monthly report. And that concludes it for me.
Well, I'm wondering if, so, there's exciting work happening on rail trail, yes? I don't, Dan, do you want to, do you want to give a quick? Yeah, because it's lovely.
So, we have, several months ago, we did contract with Markowski Excavating, they were the low bidder for the project. They have cleared the rail trail, which essentially runs from Bennington Station to Northside Drive and Emma Street vicinity of, if you know where Dunkin' Donuts is, it's Emma Street. So, will connect downtown to the Northside Drive and Molly Stark School in between, and so it's, it is quite a, you know, a useful project and a beneficial project for folks. But the, Markowski has cleared the trees of the site, and they've begun to remove the rails. My understanding is they hope to finish removing all the rails this season. They'll return as early as they can in spring to remove the ties and begin the work of creating the subbase for the trail. It will, the trail will be paved from Bennington Station to Orchard Road area, and then it will be a gravel surface from there to the Emma Street access point. So, all to be completed by about this time next year. So, it'll be a long process, but hopefully about this time next year, we can have ribbon cutting and folks can enjoy that, that amenity. Already heard from a couple of folks, a couple of businesses along the rail trail are very excited about it becoming available for them and for the folks to take advantage of. So, as you all know, it's been a long, long process to get this going, and it's really nice to see it happening finally.
Yeah, stay there. I just want to make sure the ribbon cutting for the path behind is this Thursday at 4:00, right?
October 28th, which is Thursday, 4:00 PM, correct, Jonah? Jonah and Katie West from SVSU put that together for us, great job. And so, yes, anybody who wants to attend that ribbon cutting, and it looks like the weather might actually be okay.
Yeah.
So, should be a good time, and it's a really great facility, so even if you can't come to the ribbon cutting, I'd ask folks to just take a quick look at it. It's, it really came out, we're really happy with the way it came out.
And to find it, you just go to Willbrook, go to the end of the Willbrook, of Willbrook Drive, I guess.
Yeah, that's the easiest way to find it.
And, and the path is right there.
Right there, yeah, and it connects Willbrook to Orchard Village via a combination of path and really, really nice boardwalk, and it's all lit at night, so.
That's what I heard.
We're real happy with that.
Yeah. And I also am thrilled about the Benmont Avenue Improvement Project.
Hunt Street will hopefully, within the next couple of years, actually be a reasonably safe intersection compared to what it is today.
Yeah, but that just seems to be moving so quick.
Well, it moves really, really slow, and then it seems to happen all at once.
I see.
So, that's kind of where it is, but if you ask somebody who's worked on those projects, they'll say it's taken a really, really, really long time to get to this point, but we're excited to, we're basically on final design, final plans with that particular project, so.
And last thing, just, it's dark outside now, but next time we have a select board meeting, just look out the window and you can see the rail trail.
Yes.
Beautiful work out there.
Yes, it's all cleared, and you can see the path away, you can see the future there, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. All right, all right, so, that's everything on the manager's report? Yep?
Oh, I have one more question, I'm sorry, Jeanie, I'm sorry. Still, when you were at, visiting the senior center, and they mentioned that they weren't receiving information about things, did they, did they happen to mention where they look for information, and how can we get them information in a better way? Did the discussion go there?
No, no one really talked about how they currently get their information, they just wanted more.
Your button.
I'm sorry.
Because I kept bumping it, so. No one really mentioned where they currently get their information or try to get their information, but they were just encouraging the town to the extent that it can to get more information out there. And we're hoping to use that, that online newsletter that really was focused on the senior center and the recreation center, but perhaps we can broaden that effort, because that is an online source, and if you supply us with your email, you get the, you get the news, so we'll see what we can do, that's the goal anyway.
Okay, great, thank you.
That's wonderful, great. Okay, so, upcoming agenda, so, my understanding is that on our November 8th meeting, we're going to have a site visit for the discontinuation of a road, is this true?
Two.
Two roads, and we're doing that at 5:00 PM directly before our 6:00 PM meeting? Is that accurate?
Yes, we'll meet at Brookside, which is on South Street, at 5:00 PM, move to Town Highway 29 or the foothills, which is off of Monument Avenue, just after, if you come up from the hospital, it's just after the entrance to SVC and the private residence there. It's really a gravel drive, not much else stands out, and then we'll move down to the facility for our public hearing. And there's a public hearing on two discontinuances. All of the adjoining property owners have been notified, I've had contact from a number of them wondering, what does this mean? I've explained that it really doesn't mean much to them, it really just rectifies some, I wouldn't call them mistakes, but they were, neither of these two roadways should have ever been designated a town highway in the past, and there are complications now that the state has determined if we don't discontinue them, we need to make changes, and I just soon, and the property owners are with me.
Okay, all right, so there'll be information in our packet about where the road trip begins and ends for the November 8th meeting?
Correct.
Okay, so that's at 5:00. And then we, let's see, we have the continued discussion and a decision to make on downtown funding. We will start a conversation on 10 years out on our 2012 community visit. We have, we have a bunch of stuff. Dr. Trey Dobson will be with us, it's the first meeting of the month, and, well, maybe that's it, because we're going to hold off on stormwater permit, and we, and we've already talked about the ribbon cutting this Thursday.
Can you just clarify the 10-year visit by who?
Oh, by the, no, the 10-year, 10 years out on the community visit.
Of?
Of.
I can never think of the acronym.
Vermont Council on Rural Development.
Okay.
It's the worst name ever.
I know, it's a little too long.
Okay, Vermont, yes. And, and that report is up on our website, under Government and Documents, and scroll down and you'll see Community Visit. Yeah, okay. All right, anything else that, think of that should be on that next agenda? If not, I'm sure something else will pop up, but if not, then it's gone to other business. Okay, oh, did you want to, you were at the, the CAB award, do you want to speak about the CAB, about the Energy Committee?
Yes, I would, yeah, and did you? I can, I thought of, yeah. The, at CAT TV, the Town of Bennington Police Department received an award, I'm just writing, looking at it right here, there it is, from the Climate Advocates of Bennington as a result of the purchase and use of hybrid police vehicles, I'm glad that that's plural, and also the electric patrol bicycles, and so they're recipients of that award. I would encourage folks, if you haven't seen the police department hybrid vehicles, it probably means you haven't had a visit by the detectives yet, which is probably a good thing, but having had conversations with the officers who are driving those, they love them, and it was a great idea to purchase those, so, let's, that's, I think, congrats to the PD for that, and also actually to the select board for pushing it.
And they're going to continue to buy hybrids?
Yes, yes, because they actually work, who knew? And I would encourage, as, I know as the town is working on, on developing its budget, to be thinking about other ways in which we can do things like that. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for reminding me.
Yes. Sarah, anything? Okay, Jim?
I just want to express the board's thanks, thanks to the Bennington Free Library, particularly Lynn Fontenot McCain and the Board of Directors for hosting members at the library last week. It was informative and one of my old haunts, and I mean it, I haunted that place when I was a kid. It was very enjoyable, and thank you to them.
This feels like true confession time, but, because it is your birthday?
Yeah.
You did bring out your old yearbook.
Rub it in.
You are a very, you still are, but it was a very good-looking picture in your yearbook, I'm just saying.
Had a lot of hair.
Jean, anything?
So, we have a vote coming up on November 2nd for the turf field and other improvements, so either vote in person on November 2nd, or I believe you can go into the town office and vote. It may be too late to request an absentee ballot, I know there's a cutoff, because they have to be mailed in both directions, but anyway, don't forget that. And just to clarify, the citizen survey is still out and about in the community, and so I don't mess it up, where can it be found other than on the website?
The senior center.
The senior center.
And the recreation center.
The recreation center.
I'm pretty tempted by the library, I'm waiting for a callback.
The library, you said?
I'm waiting for a callback to see if we're connected.
And they're in the town office?
They're in the town office.
Okay. Or online?
Yes.
Yes, okay, and that, that deadline to participate in the citizen survey is November 2nd?
Well, it's just off, and I'm really a member of that, and you can get in as late as possible, because we want to get extra time for a minute.
Okay, scrap that, it's actually November 5th.
Tom, anything?
Tom, I'm sorry.
You all set? Okay, Gary?
Yes, the Energizer Reuse Study Report is complete. It's a pretty comprehensive report of 146 pages, and a press release will be coming out soon. To summarize that report, you can see the whole report at benningtonvermont.org/reports. It's at the top of the list under Special Reports and Documents.
Thank you. All right, let's see, I have two things. One is, a number of us go on the monthly river walks, and it is so beautiful to see the new, not only the new concrete pads for the benches, but the benches. And so, the concrete pads, thank you to, I think, Mark Sawyer and crew, yes?
Yes.
And the benches, Kelly Carroll and her husband were responsible for refurbishing the beautiful wood on the benches, and they're, they're really gorgeous, so I think half, it looks like some of them are out there, there's still some to be.
Yeah, I think five of them are installed, I'm sorry, I was going to mention that, and I think five of them are there, and I think maybe four more or three more, and they may be, I went yesterday, they may be there today, I don't know.
Yeah, I wasn't there today either, so I'm not really sure, but one of the, one of the things that we did do with the concrete pads is they are large enough to accommodate benches similar to the cast iron benches that we have in the downtown, so ultimately, if we move in that direction, we don't have to redo that.
Yeah, it looks nice.
And I don't know if they oriented them differently, but they're oriented to facilitate, like, conversation, and they're really lovely the way they're, they've been placed, and maybe they were always that way, but it's, it's much more noticeable, and just because they're so beautiful now.
That's great, and then the other is, I was walking down, down past the library last week, and there was a woman walking up the street with a huge smile and a beautiful bouquet of flowers, and I said, oh, look at those flowers, and she said, yes. She said, I was just walking downtown, and Beth and Dwayne, Will Wall from the Gift Garden, were handing out flowers, which is just another lovely thing about living in Bennington. So, thank you to the Gift Garden for doing that repeatedly, it's just wonderful. All right, so, anything else we want to share? All right, then, we have need for an executive session for both real estate matter and for personnel, and we are not making any decisions when we come out. I have a motion to go into executive session.
So, move.
Second.
Thank you both. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you, we'll take a two-minute break and then move into that.